Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order for March 18th. First line of business is the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we move forward this evening, as always, just to let you know, because obviously we're in the public here, but you are being taped for playback on AOTV and also as well as the district website. And we'll go over that a little bit further on the chairman's report. My main goal this evening, we did expedite the agenda this evening with regards to what's going on. I would like to get everybody out of here, you know, at a relatively good clip, because obviously it doesn't do us any good to all be in the same room, you know, kind of working against what the policies are of the state, et cetera, so we'll move on. Approval of minutes for February 12th?
Second.
Any discussion, clarifications? Seeing none, all's in favor? No public input this evening, no student representative report, no recognition. Unfinished business, vote the SOA funding plan.
So in your packet this evening, we have given you the document with the SOA funding. So the white column is what we are recommending that the school committee vote on for approval for the SOA funding. Just so you are aware, when we did the original figures, as we said to you at that meeting, was there was a dilemma in that what was SOA funding and what was increase in chapter 70 due to the number of students we had in the district. So you will see in this document that the amount we really got for SOA was $250,400. And so that white column is essentially what we are recommending to the school committee that we use that funding for at this time. And also if the school committee could remember, rise up right now, we have to have this in by April 1st. So in order for me to get the document into the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, I need a vote this evening from the school committee to approve the document.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we accept the SOA as proposed.
Second.
Motion made in second, discussion. Sit, go ahead.
I just wanted to indicate that I think it's the choices are a good use of our money to improve education.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing none, all's in favor? Opposed? Okay, under new business, coronavirus and then school closures, kind of same thing at the same time.
Yeah, okay. So first of all, I want to just give an update to the school committee on what this school district has been doing in relationship to the COVID virus. As you know, the governor on Friday announced that all schools are to be closed. So we have been closed for all students as of Monday. Our departments have been working in collaboration with both the Department of Public Health and the town manager to make these decisions. We have met multiple times to have discussions about what is best for the interests of the students in the district. In addition to that, since the governor said that schools are closed, we have been in the process of a deep cleaning in every one of our buildings. All of our custodians are going through every single classroom, washing down desks, washing down floors and such to make sure when our students return that we have thoroughly cleaned the building. Even prior to that, the district had been doing extra cleaning in the buildings, wiping down what they consider hideless areas, which are basically doorknobs and light switches to avoid a child getting the virus within our building. I think our, I want to say that I think our maintenance department's done an outstanding job in making sure that our building was kept clean during that time. And even now, I think is doing an outstanding job in going through all the classrooms and ensuring that everything is immaculate. So when our students return, we are not in a situation where the building is unsafe for someone. As for the school closure, since school closure, we have already begun, starting Tuesday, with feeding of our students in the district. We do it in two ways. First of all, we have buses that pick up at ACES Elementary School, lunches for students, and they transport them to individual students' bus stops. So if parents are not aware of that, please be aware that we are doing that. We are in what we call a two-hour delay. So if your child normally gets on the bus at eight, they can expect their lunch to be at their site around 10 o'clock. So parents, if you're out on the street, you can do that. I also want to let everybody know, regardless of whether a student is a member of the Athol-Royalston School District, as long as they are under the age of 19, we will feed them at any of these bus stops. Because what, we are in a very unique position in that us applying for, through the federal government, free lunch for everyone, we are one of only five sites in the state that's allowed to feed everyone without cost. And so we're very excited about that. And I want to give great kudos to Carolyn Brown, who has worked diligently to make sure we have the resources to provide for our students. A lot of other districts are in a situation where they're trying to figure out how to feed their students, because normally it's a fee-based system, which means normally kids would have to pay in order to provide lunch. We are not in that situation. So just so you know, yesterday we fed 470 students, today we fed 495 students. So clearly, there is a need out there and it's working. I also want to say thank you to Merrifield Buses. They have been present from the minute I called them and willing to drive around the community to make sure we're getting that out. And it's also helping our employees, because they're in a situation where they're not in a closed space giving out food to kids. And in addition to that, the buses kind of dropping the stuff off, allowing people to pick up, and then putting it back on the bus to keep that distance that we're looking for. So the system seems to be working. The other ways families can go to either the high school or ACES and do a drive-up. If they drive up to the front of the building, anytime between 10 and 11, somebody will walk out to you, greet you, and provide you with whatever number of lunches you are looking for, for the number of children you have. So I want to make sure there are plenty of opportunities for families to be fed. And we are not only giving lunch, we are also giving breakfast. So when a student gets their packet, they are getting enough for their breakfast and lunch for that given day. In addition to that, we have been working very closely with our ATA to ensure that we have a memorandum of agreement for our teachers to begin supporting our students. I am happy to present that document to the school committee tonight. I believe we are at a place where we are clearly in agreement on this. If approved tonight, we can begin accessing teachers tomorrow and having them provide learning to students in the district or what I call extension enrichment activities for our students. So I am proposing, recommending to the school committee that we vote for agreement on this, so we can begin that work with the ATA.
You should have a copy of that agreement that was reached basically this afternoon. So it's on your table. Is there a motion to move in second, at least for discussion?
I make a motion, no second.
Motion made in second. That was Deb on the second.
Sure.
Thank you.
Discussion. Okay.
Can you give us a couple of minutes to peruse it?
Sir.
I did receive a number of emails, which I read, but I'm not good.
Right, we just got that one probably 45 minutes ago.
So this one isn't the one, I thought something earlier.
Yes, this is the final version, which just was completed 45 minutes ago.
Charles, sorry.
I'd just like to mention something that was presented to us at the policy subcommittee meeting this morning, which is this basically mirrors what every other school that we are aware of, every other district that we are aware of is in Massachusetts is doing. And I think it represents a really important step in making sure the kids' educational services are as good as they can be in this interval.
Anybody else want to mention?
Can you make a comment on my way to talk?
Okay, sure. And Deb?
The one thing I will say is I really appreciate the fact that the ATA was able to sit down with us and get to an agreement that both supported teachers and students. So I really want to make sure I mention that today.
Mitch, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to say, first of all, I appreciate the superintendent and other administrators working with the teachers and the union on this document. I appreciate the give and take on both sides. And I do appreciate the fact that as a level four district, with many of our children and many of our families in great need of services and educational services, I want to congratulate the district and also the teachers on their willingness to step forward and to step up and to provide those services to children in their homes and even to keep the lines of communication open by calling and emailing students during the course of the week on a regular basis. I think that's an outstanding, an outstanding agreement from both sides. And I think it's another indication that our district and our teachers really care about the students. And that's the whole point of our educational process. So I want to thank all those involved in this memorandum of agreement.
Candy, well said.
I'm all set.
Any other comments?
I took the speed reading.
Good, perfect. If there are no other comments, I will move to motion. All those in favor, opposed, I must abstain. Okay.
The only other thing, so you know, is tomorrow morning, starting at 9:00 a.m., we will be asking our staff to be on a conference call. We will go through the details and the expectations that are within this agreement. In addition to that, we will be posting for families how they begin to access material for their child. So what parents can expect is that there will be a link on our website. They will be able to click on that link. Down will come a list of every teacher in the district. They will be able to click on the teacher's name that the student currently has, and they will find the set of materials right there. And so the system, as soon as it is up and running, I will notify the parents. Obviously, with the teachers knowing, we're looking probably most likely at, starting on Monday, with everything being posted and popped. In the meantime, we will be posting tomorrow some extension activities in general that parents can do with their children for the next couple of days as we get this portal up and running. I also want to let families know that if you do not have available in your home a access to the internet, Spectrum right now is offering a 60-day free access to it, so they need to call Spectrum. In addition to that, if you don't have a computer at home, we will post tomorrow, or actually, we posted today on the website, a document as to where you can go and exactly what time and actually pick up a Chromebook, one per household. We do not have enough to give to every student in the district, but we can do one per household. And I ask that households that already have access to a computer at home, if you would use that instead of coming in to get the school equipment, it would be appreciated. But our goal is to make sure there is one per household, so that students and families can access it. If your family, even after getting the Chromebook, is unable to get access to internet, you may call your school, in which case the admin assistants within that building will make copies of the material based on their child's teacher. And we will be able to transport that to you via the lunch buses. So that that way, even if you do not have access, that will be another way in which you can get access to the materials for your children. And I believe that's what I have, unless there's some questions.
Just a question. As we all know, there are households in Royalston that either have no internet service or have dial-up.
Right.
How are they going to get the word that this Spectrum thing is available to them?
Right, where we are at right now is part of a process, our teachers are expected to call two days a week to the households, or internet. So if they're not getting them via email, they are then going to call the home and they can explain to the families that they can call the office and then we can distribute it through the lunch runs.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, Spectrum is cable.
Oh.
You can't get that in Rust.
There is no cable in Rust.
No, so they'll have to get the printed packets.
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
So they will have to get the printed packets. But the good news is teachers are supposed to be contacting all families. When they contact, that's some of the questions they'll be asking, and then giving them advice as to how they can get access if they do not have service. And I want to make sure we have put this plan together with that in mind, because we do understand in our district, we have a large number of families where we can't run a virtual school. And so we have to have another way to access. So that's the way in which we're going to do it. And the good news is with the lunch buses running, it's easy enough so the child can meet the bus, get their work, and move forward from there.
Just before we move on from the agreement, I should have asked.
Okay.
Normally, it would be the chair of the committee who would sign agreements and contracts, et cetera. I don't want to put myself in that place, because hers is a fair professional. So I have no objection if the superintendent signs this or John as the vice chair. I just want to make sure that we know who's going to sign it before we leave.
Fine by me.
So either way, Darcy or John, as long as one of you signs it before we leave.
At the end, John would be mine?
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mitch.
I just want to say, in terms of communication, I know that as parents and teachers occasionally ask us as members of the school committee particular questions, and we try to answer them as forthrightly as we are able. I know the superintendent has also indicated that she is certainly available to answer any questions or concerns that you have. And she's straight out, which will answer your questions or your calls just as soon as possible.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, I believe that's it for me.
Thank you. Vote to use E and D in school choice funds.
Okay, we met, the last time we met with the towns was, what, two weeks ago, a week ago? And I think we, maybe we said this at the budget sub, that we did come to an agreement with the town of Athol for their assessment at 3.5%. So based on that calculation, we have in the budget right now to use $500,000 of excess and deficiency. We have been approved, certified for $636,000 worth of E and D. So we can use up to $636,000. There's $500,000 right now in the budget that supports that 3.5%. And right now, in the budget for school choice transfers, there's $494,500. But I would like to give us a little leeway on that. We are still meeting with Royalston to get this figured out. Like I said, Athol has agreed at 3.5% assessment. So if you would vote to use $500,000 of excess and deficiency, like I said, we were certified for 636, so we've got plenty there, and up to $600,000 for school choice, hopefully we won't have to use that much. Like I said, with this calculation right now, we're using about $494. But if we have to use a little bit more, I want the leeway to be able to do that. So if you could vote to use $500,000 of E and D and up to $600,000 of school choice funds, that will give us the tools to go ahead and keep negotiating.
I make the motion.
Second. Good. Motion made in second, is any discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? All right, Athol High School Program of Studies.
Yes, so you receive that in your packet. Ultimately, in order to begin scheduling at the high school, the school committee has to vote to approve the program of studies. So unless you're, just looking to see if there are any questions, otherwise I would ask.
I'm moving for second. Discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? Thank you. Communications, there's really nothing, it's just your enrollment form, enrollment sheet is in there. Financial statements and approval of accounts.
Okay, your normal expenditure, revenue, and grant reports are all in there. Hopefully, you've had a chance to take a look at them. So basically, everything is status quo. I don't see anything that I have to really report tonight, unless you've got a particular question on any of those reports, we can move along.
Any questions, Ellen? Okay.
And again, if you do have any, email me, call me, whatever. But if nothing jumps out at you, everything right now is looking good.
Thank you. Strategic plan, there's no update this evening?
We had a couple of.
Oh, okay, I thought you wrapped it into one. Go ahead.
That's all right. A couple of other things, there are two. There are, let's see, the audit report and the certified E and D. Also, I did have the certified E and D for you. So that's just the message from DOR certifying our E and D at 636-589. And there's an audit report in there for our financial audit report. There are no findings, but feel free to read it. If you've got any questions, let me know. Under other, I just wanted to, I passed out again the budget calendar. Just wanted to bring your attention to right now, our next meeting is April 8th, which is our public meeting date. Yeah, so we'll see what happens with that. Cheryl had to put the notice in the paper, correct, about that?
So I'm waiting to find out whether or not we are going to put it in the paper. I need to know by Friday.
For what date?
April 8th is our public hearing and school committee reorganization.
Moving. Did you have your hand up?
I was going to ask you, is there going to be a vote?
I will cover that now, if you'd like.
Right.
As of last night, the town of Athol, in conjunction, most likely, with the town of Royalston, voted to file a petition to the governor for emergency legislation moving our town elections to June. So there technically really isn't a need for reorganization, because everybody continues at this point until the actual election. If you want to have the April 8th budget hearing, that's what that's for, right? That certification?
Right.
I think maybe along the way, you can try to set something up for the Zoom or for something. Because it is my intention, unless people disagree with me, I'm not planning on scheduling too many more live meetings. You know, we're going to be, I'm working this every day like Darcy is from my side of my employment. We're going to get hit, we're going to get hit bad in the U.S. And I just don't think that we need to plan a bunch of group sessions and whatever we can do to bring it, we have to, even though the open meeting law allows us to exclude the public, technically, we're supposed to be able to have them be able to log on, do something, or view it, or maybe it's something as simple as a Facebook Live with multiple screens or whatever. The way we comply this evening is that this will be put on as humanly fast as Josh can do it. But from now on, from here on out, the public needs to be able to access that under the open meeting law. What the state has recommended is that the chair of the committee go to a location and be physically present as the chair to run the meeting. That's not me sitting home in my boxer shorts or, you know, watching. You know, just going to like, you know, up here or at town hall or something, sit in a room and be the moderator in the chair, and then everybody else would either call in or Zoom in or whatever. Which means, I think, we should probably plan on that now for our April school committee meeting. We're going to have to postpone the McNiff dedication until further notice, because we can't get any crowds in schools. So I don't, I think that, you know, we have to kind of follow. I know that the select board last night, we voted to move forward and look at those types of options as well. So it just makes sense. I mean, if there's a critical, you know, policy subcommittee meeting or something that normally meets during the day, I would say, you know, if you can formulate a plan to do that type of broadcast for the members to the, because again, I don't want to drag, if you're comfortable with three of you and Darcy in the room, that's fine. But I just think, you know, any meeting we schedule from this point on has to be broadcastable to the public. So just keep that in mind. So August, August.
Yeah, that's what we.
So far, April 8th, that would be the presentation of the budget to the public, technically. And I personally have a feeling that we're not going to have much more of a school year. All indications that I'm getting from internal sources in Boston is that the governor is going to probably eventually pull the plug on the school year. All the states are doing it, so I mean, we'll have some, we'll have some issues and we'll have some learning curves along the way, but, you know, we'll get through it. And, you know, it is what it is, unfortunately, we can't control it. Is there anybody opposed to that plan? Or we'll do, I'll give everybody plenty of notice, or, you know, we can do a trial run, you know, kind of not publicizing it, but just try to see how best we can get everybody included.
Mitch, out opposed, and that certainly seems like the best way to do so. My question is, is part of your request to the state, postponed our elections, does that include allowing those members whose terms technically expire at the end of?
They will not expire.
They will not expire.
Yep. Royalston is tentatively onboard. Nancy Burnham contacted the town clerk there. The town of Orange is going to do the same thing. So, I mean, most municipalities are looking to, because of the unknown. You can't plan an election and then a week before cancel it, because you can't do that. I mean, your little hook, you can't do that.
You don't know who's showing up.
Right, yeah. So, okay, we'll move on from that and we'll, you know, make it work somehow. It may not be perfect, but it will be there.
And then just one other thing?
Sure.
The RCS water system vote.
Do I actually have that? It's in the bottom of the pile.
It's a recommendation, I think either Ken or Bill.
Again, the facilities committee met prior to this meeting. I know we've been going back and forth on this chemical that we should be using for the Royalston school water supply. We originally were scheduled to go with the caustic soda to lower the chemicals that were in the water. Somehow, we got sidetracked through engineers' recommendations to go with soda ash, which did seem to solve the problem. However, the EP and EPA weren't in favor of that. It's not on the approved list for EPA. So it appears that we're going to have to go with the original chemical that we planned to initially. So we have been in contact, Lynn has been in contact with the engineering firm, Rumors Heinz, and I spoke with the engineer that did this project, and he's recommending the caustic, what is it?
Caustic soda.
Caustic soda. And the company will come in once a month and they will basically.
They handle it.
They handle it. They will fill the filtration and the system. And the only requirement of ours would be that we keep a daily check on the pH level. And also, he said on the dial numbers to check the percentage in the flow. So he would be in contact with the custodian of the plant manager and also Lynn in what needs to be done. He said that it can be done remotely, but it's probably better done on-site. So we had hoped that the soda ash would work, but this is what we need to do because of DEP and EPA.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to accept it.
There are second? Second, discussion. Seeing no one.
I was writing.
Good jump, yeah. All in favor? Opposed, none. Thank you.
Abstaining.
Okay, Ken abstaining.
Thank you.
Yep. Under the reports of the subcommittees, budget?
I think Lynn has gone over everything on the budget. I'm surprised with that.
Okay. Facilities, anything else, Ken?
We talked about the project that will be taking place at the high school concerning the painting of eventually 16 classrooms, new furniture in those 16 classrooms, cafeteria furniture. Much of the furniture has already been ordered. Probably won't use it till next year. And the room paintings will be due next week.
I do have a question. That one person that keeps complaining to me from Lake Ellis Road on the fence, happens to be myself, but that fence that I'm seeing is getting worse. Multiple more sections have fallen.
Yes, yes. That's going to be fixed in the spring.
Okay.
Actually, the insurance is paying for it.
Spring is Thursday, you realize.
Whenever they can, yeah, whenever the frost-
Then the other thing I noticed, too, is that, I don't know who's doing it, but the sections of the white top are starting to appear everywhere. There was one on the lower hill that must have blown off or something, but then somebody picked up another one, and it's actually on the beach fence on top, so it looks like the beach fence has the white, so. I don't know if at some point it's time to lose that plastic stuff, because most of it's broken, faded anyways, so. And it's blowing off, and it's being repurposed by somebody.
All right.
Okay. And it's not me, I'm not taking it. Negotiations?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Academic excellence?
Academic did not meet. Nothing.
Okay. Public relations?
We met last week, but because of a computer failure, I do not have my notes with me. And I can't do it for many, I'm afraid.
All right. Policy sub. Deb, you're up.
Okay, you can see that we have amended for our third reading. Does the chair, did I-
Sure.
Make one?
Or you can, is anybody opposed if we state one motion submitted for the third reading, all of those for the third reading? Okay. Is there a motion for all?
I make a motion to accept the monolith presented for the third reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Great, thank you.
Okay, we do have one, you know, I would like to ask the committee to vote to make it a third reading. It's only the first coming to us. It's called fiscal restraint of students. You should have it somewhere in the packet or-
Yeah.
On the table.
That's right. Organize this as we go through it until we're done.
This has been gone through, and Craig has gone through and approved, and has been binding, I guess, should we call it?
This would be JKA if you're looking for-
This is the JKA, and I would like to have a motion to waive the three readings.
Is there, okay. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we're voting on the waiving of the three readings. All those in favor? Okay.
Do you need a motion to approve it?
I make a motion to approve JKA.
Motion made and seconded to approve JKA. Any discussion? Mitch?
Just the fact that the policy is based very strongly upon the most reasonable policy, which was adopted at least in 2015. And we have gone through it, and the council has gone through it, and that's the policy that we approve.
Anyone else?
I'm done.
Okay. All those in favor? Those, thank you. All right. We're still running very well on time. Committee referrals. Ken?
Just thanks to the cafeteria workers and the bus drivers that helped in the cafeteria management, providing the lunches and breakfasts, you know, to children in town.
Yep. John?
None.
Okay, Deb?
No, I'm just at home with Booker and Seth.
Perfect. Nancy?
The same thing.
Okay, Bill?
I'll go with what Ken said, and I'm in Barcille also, Marifield, cafeteria staff. Actually, there are a lot of the staff that are working on this whole project. I happen to be up here over days, it's, I've forgotten, yesterday, Tuesday, and yesterday. I'm losing track of things, it's not working. But people were working on that. Everyone was really involved in the whole thing. I've been up at Marifield's earlier in the day, and there were virtually no problems. I mean, a couple of phone calls about a bus went five. We never could figure out, even know that it was not there, bus going to another location or something. So I think there were like zero, very few complaints in the first day. And that's remarkable, considering how many meals went out. Really nice. I have another question, though, about the school calendar. Did I miss something? Did we, have we voted on this?
Yeah, we've voted.
Let me just say, I have a concern, and maybe you want to address it. I have a concern about November and December with the, November 9th, which is, I believe, a half-day professional day, and November 11th, right after that is Veterans Day. Similar situation in December, on December 21st, is a half-day professional, and on the 23rd is only a half-day. To me, that's not a good placement of that, because it kind of causes kids to shut down for a longer period of time, or maybe even, maybe even take those days off. I don't know. I'm just concerned about that, so I wanted to say, and the last thing, and then I'll shout out, here's the clock at this point.
I know.
Did anybody, did I miss it, or did we not introduce our new head of facilities?
I was just going to tap you on the shoulder, so I'm like-
Go ahead.
Yeah, so I wanted to introduce you to our new director of facilities, who's raised the decisions, Steve Vemino, who is down at the end. And I will say to you, he's been working now, what, a week?
Couple of weeks.
A couple of weeks. In those couple of weeks, he has been asked and challenged to meet needs. No one has ever had to do before, and his calmness and his ability to just go with the flow has been incredible. He already has quite the handle on the district and the way in which we're working, so I really appreciate having him on board. He has been excellent. I don't know if you want to say anything at all, Steve?
It's just been, been quite the experience.
Mitch, you're up first.
I'm, well, Bill is saying that I usually never say anything, because I often do, gives me a chance to say some things on my mind, and I'll try to keep it as brief as possible. I do think that this is a time, more than any time in recent memory, that our children in this district need us. And that's the reason that each of us got into education, each of the teachers and the paraprofessionals at home as well, and each of the administrators. That's why we do this, because the kids need us. And they need us desperately right now. And I think that there are two major things they need us for, which is to provide those learning experiences, which are absolutely crucial, even as we reach this point in the year, particularly as we reach this point in the year. And secondly, to keep those lines of communication, which parents and families open. And I'm glad that we're doing both of those things. I do want to say also that we really, you know that we care about kids, that's why we're here, but we also care about our staff. And I think that, as I look around, the tables here, they're all six feet apart, by the way, you can't judge that very well on television. As I look around the tables here, I know that we regard our staff as much more than just employees. We regard them as people we care about, as part of our extended families. And I like to think that in our deliberations, that we've recognized how important they are to the children in our community, and also how important that staff is to us as well, the decisions that we've made. And I do think that someday, we will look back at this time when we had to endure and hopefully conquered this virus, this COVID-19, and we will remember how we all stood together, administrators, staff, and families, and we did the very best we could for the children in our district.
Carla?
Nothing to add to that.
Kim?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you very much.